So tonight we're looking at some uh modifications we're planning to make to our uh development code. You have all seen this before in a workshop form, so a lot of this should be very familiar to you, but we're bringing it back today for the actual hearing. After you folks looked at it, our city council had a workshop as well, and so some of these things have had their input as well as we go through them. We'll touch what uh what they wanted to talk about. So what you see here on the screen is we have two different types of changes that we're talking about to our development code tonight. One is a federally mandated change, and that's got the funny name pick 'em, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And the other one is just some state mandated changes and other changes that we felt were necessary to our development code. So let's start with those federal ones. Um it began kind of with a lawsuit. Um we had the Endangered Species Act uh was not really being enforced or implemented through FEMA's policies, and so uh they got sued and were told that they needed to do that. And so altogether the uh judge ordered um altogether with the the different parties and the judge, they ordered a biological they ordered a biological opinion in 2016. And that biological opinion outlined different areas that weren't complying. And it was basically parts of Oregon and Washington only. So this isn't a nationwide FEMA change. It's really just localized to the Pacific Northwest. And has to do primarily with fish migration and the impacts to fish through the FEMA policies. So the full implementation of these changes that were required by the lawsuit are going to happen in 2027. But what we're looking at now are temporary measures that are needed to address the impacts that need to change right now today. And those are called pre-compliance implementation measures, or PICOM for short. And that's what we're looking at today. FEMA has indicated that any of these changes have to happen on the ground where they're actually implemented, and that's by cities. So even though the change was by the federal government to a federal government agency, the actual changes that need to make it happen have to happen here at the local level. So we get to inherit their circumstances. So in Millersburg, the FEMA flood code is implemented through a zoning overlay in our city. So anywhere where the FEMA zone exists, that overlay automatically applies to that as well. So any changes that we need to make to implement this FEMA requirement obviously has to happen to our flood overlay. And so that's what we're talking about today. The flood overlay text that we have in our code was already dictated almost word for word by FEMA in the past. When we redid our development code five, four years ago, they dictated word for word every bit of the flood overlay that we have. And so when it came time to implement these PICOM changes, they simply modified the code that we already had to implement for them. So the changes were pretty easy for us to do. So our flood code regulations, since they're in an overlay, they only apply inside flood plan limits, period. So anything you see in these PICOM rules will only apply within that overlay. If something is just outside the overlay, none of these PICOM rules that we're talking about would apply to that area because it only applies inside the flood plain. The bulk of the changes that FEMA has required us to do is to add a whole new set of standards that they call no net loss standards. I wasn't going to go into those in great detail tonight. We outlined that in the staff report, and we did talk about it in great detail last time we came to you with a workshop. So I wasn't going to go through those bit by bit. But besides that, we are adding some new definitions to our development code as well. So back in May, when we finished our first draft of what this new revised code would look like, a model ordinance would look like, we sent it out to the State Department of Planning, the DLCD, to review. We also sent it off to FEMA to review. The DLCD got back to us right away and said, it looks like it's in compliance to us. Good job. FEMA waited until last Friday to get back to us. And so what you have in front of you here is what looks like a massive memo, and what is a massive memo? But FEMA got back to us on Friday and said, yes, we think that your revisions are in compliance with what we're looking for, but you missed five different definitions that we think should be added. Okay, we can comply with that. So in the memo you have in front of you, you have in red the five different additional definitions we plan on adding to our development code. We've already made that to the ordinance that will be going before our city council, your city council, next week. But just so you know, that's it. Now, the larger document behind it is just a table that they put together that analyzes our code step by step through an entire table. And it gives it an analysis from FEMA with each section to say, yes, this complies, yes, this complies, yes, this complies. And as you'll read it, you'll see we comply in every one of their categories. So it's just a supplemental document, a big, long, fancy way of saying, yeah, what you did looks good to us. So we wanted to bring that forward to you today. So that pretty much wraps up the FEMA changes. So let's go ahead and dive into the other code amendments we were proposing as well. We're going to start with the RV covers. And again, I'm going to try and hit all this real lightly because we already talked about it quite a bit previously. But the walls we're talking about allowing people to add to RV covers. Again, the point here is to make sure that they don't turn that into a metal sided shop by adding walls to it. And so last time we talked about this, the city council liked what we did. So you can add walls on three sides, can't add it on the front. We heard you on the screen recommendation, and so we did add text in there that said, now you can add screening all the way around. That's fine, as long as we can see through it, that seems fine. And of course, the idea we talked about last time remains, and that is that the walls can't come closer than four feet to the ground. So that's it on that. And we can come back to these and talk about these at the end if you have any questions on those, of course. But I figured we'd just get through the presentation first. The second one here was on ground mounted solar. And this change, we basically wanted to just make sure that you can do ground mounted solar in other applications, not just residential, because we just changed this to say residential only. And afterwards, we realized you probably should have been a little bit more generous with that. And so what we've done to address that is we are now allowing ground mounted solar as a listed use in non-residential zones. And so we've added that to every one of the non-residential zones. But it can only be used when it's ancillary to another project. So you can't go out and take, you know, virgin naked land out there in our industrial section and turn it into a solar farm, because that's not the highest and best use. But if you want to add it in a parking lot, fine. Remember, if they wanted to add it on the roof of any building, that was already allowed. This is ground mounted solar, not roof mounted solar, very different. So we also needed to add a few clarifications because the rules that we made last year were specific to residential zones. And some of the standards really only make sense in residential zones. And so we've now gone in there and just specified, here are some standards that are now only for residential zones and wouldn't apply in an industrial zone. On partitions, we've talked about this in the past. We had a real problem with serial partitioning. And so we, the planning commission and city council, came up with a lot of different standards to try and curtail that and stop serial partitioning. It worked like a charm. We haven't had a lot of serial partitioning since then. But we may have overshot a little bit because one of the rules that we added was that if you're dividing a property that's big enough to re-divide in the future, you have to play by the subdivision rules and standards. Well, my attorney didn't like that very much because he said, now we're really changing the standards that the state is giving, the definitions rather, that the state is giving us of what a subdivision is and what a partition is. And so what we want to do is just get rid of that one standard. We don't think that's going to jeopardize anything. All the other rules we put into place seem to be working really well. Mainly the one that says you can't put more than three houses on a shared driveway. That one is really doing a good job. And so we want to get rid of that one standard, that way we're not changing definitions and should be fine. We're not worried about that one. Now, this one, the planning commission actually decided to remove this from the update. But the city council, after hearing about it, decided to put it back in. And so we can talk about this one after we're done with the presentation. But this one talks about legal non-conforming structures and who can rebuild and who can't after a catastrophe like a fire or something. And so what this says now is pretty much the same thing it said before, which is if somebody has a residential property that is not conforming in a standard, meaning they're too close to the fence or they have more lot coverage than they're supposed to. If something catastrophic happens, even 100% of the structure burns to the ground, you can then rebuild that entire structure exactly the way it was, is what this rule says. Now, we did add one proviso that's new that wasn't in there when it was before you previously. And that is it's only for homes that are newer than 1976. You might say, Matt, why 1976? Well, because that's when the city passed its first zoning ordinance. And so anything that was approved before that was beholden to the county's ordinances, not the city's ordinances. And so there might be a lot of older homes out there that we might want to not let rebuild in the event that something bad happened to it. We might want to make sure that those homes did match our code from that point on, specifically design standards and stuff like that. That way it blends into the community better. And so we've added that one provision to that. The next one was very straightforward. It just had to do with chickens and rabbits. And our code kind of made it sound like you needed a permit because it said may be approved. Made it sound like there was something to approve, like a permit, when in actuality, you don't need a permit to raise chickens and rabbits. And so we're simply changing that to make it say it's by right. That's all. You still have standards, and you still have to abide by those standards, but you don't need a permit to do it. So that brings us to middle housing land divisions, everybody's favorite. The state is trying to address what they call a housing crisis. And one of the ways, one of the several ways they're doing that is by telling different cities that they must allow what they call middle housing. And that definition is on a sliding scale from the state. It's different depending on the population of your city. So for our city, all that means is that we have to allow a duplex on every single residential lot. Now, you might remember, we already made that change last year, so that's done. But what they've done now is come out and said, you know what? We also want to require cities to be able to divide the property if they have middle housing. Not just the sticks above the ground like a condo, but the actual ground itself. So what the city or state has now done is forced us in Millersburg to allow 5,000 square foot lots, even though we have a 10,000 square foot lot minimum in most of our residential areas. We don't like this. We're not fond of this. The state's making us do it. They're twisting our arm. The state is continuing to change their requirements on what middle housing means. They did a bunch in this legislative session. And yeah, that legislative session ended Sunday. But a lot of that dust is still settling. We're still trying to wait and see what they give us for actual direction. And so for that reason, we thought it was a bit premature to go in and make a full section on middle housing yet. Remember, the state's rules preempted ours. And so right now, if somebody walked in the door, I have to let him do this division, whether my code allows it or not. It's almost irrelevant. But we wanted to add something in our code, so we've just added a shortcut to basically tell the readers of the development code, yeah, you can do one of these middle housing divisions, go see the state's rules. Now, the state lets us get a lot more specific on those rules. And so we're selling ourselves a little bit short by not adopting a full code because we could add a lot more teeth into that. And we plan on doing that next year, but not yet. Because we want to wait and make sure all the dust is shaken out from the recent legislation. The next one is also very straightforward. It has to do with our lot width to depth ratios. We had some text that said how that worked, but it was a little bit vague on what happens when lots un-square. And so we had a diagram. This diagram is actually from our development code, which is great because this diagram does address what happens when the lot isn't square. But the text didn't really echo the diagram. So now we're simply adding some text in that echoes the diagram that's already there. So it just says you have to use the mean now. So it's very, very simple and straightforward. One of the last ones here, the last one that we're talking about is signs on fences. Currently, our code, development code, says signs can't be put on fences, period. And we have no, you know, wiggle room, no nothing. We thought that was a bit extreme because there's a lot of cases where signs on fences do make sense. Construction sites, for example, is a great one where you kind of want signs on fences so you know who's working behind the fence. And so we've opted to just get rid of that rule altogether. Now, that doesn't mean there's not still regulations on these people. If somebody puts a temporary sign on a fence, they still have to meet all our temporary sign rules. There's still rules there. They can put a permanent sign on a fence, like the one you see here. They still have to follow the permanent rule, signs, even if it's on a fence. So the only thing this is doing is saying, okay, you can put signs on fences now, but they still have to meet our other permitted rules. So that's all that says. And that brings me to the end of our presentation. There's a recommended motion there on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on any of those policies.
Well, I have a question on it because we discussed it. And this is one that had mentioned, most municipalities I work in, what on the rebuilding
Yep.
Rule.
Yep.
Says that you have to rebuild under current standards. And I was, do you, was there a reasoning behind the cities saying you can build back out to the property lines again?
There is. We had one concerned resident who came in and said, right now, my house. His words, he said, my house was built to code at the time. Now the code changed, it's no longer conforming, which is fine. That is called a legal non-conforming. That happens all the time. He says, so now if my house part of the ground, I couldn't rebuild it the exact same way it was built before. And he wanted to be able to rebuild it the exact same way it was before. And so he came in and presented to the city council during our workshop and convinced the city council to go ahead and leave this in.
Because that, see, that doesn't make sense to be like, oh, well, I want to build with lead pipes and knob and tube electrical, you know? If that was code back then.
Well, those are building codes. That's a little bit different than development codes. We're talking about setbacks and lot coverage almost exclusively, right? That's really the only two things you could be violating, maybe height, but that's pretty rare. And so it's primarily setbacks and lot coverage that they could build back into. And a lot of the circumstances where this would happen, they probably would have gotten a variance in the first place, and then the variance would still hold. And so that they could still, respecting that variance, build in whatever setbacks allowed that variance back then. So we don't foresee this being something that's going to get used a lot. Probably never. Yeah, right? Knock on wood, but that city council felt that that was a valid argument. And so now, again, this wouldn't pertain to uses at all. If there's a legal non-conforming use and it burns to the ground, you can't rebuild it and start over. This code still wouldn't allow that. Our ever classic example, the poor guy, there's a bunch of them, but that's the one we keep picking on because it's right outside the door. Yeah, the house down there on, yeah, concert that is surrounded by industrial. If that burned to the ground, they would have to build it back as industrial. Now, they could build it back the same way and just call it offices instead, and that would be okay. But then the use would change, and they wouldn't be allowed to have anybody live in there anymore. That's all.
Mr. Chair, one other concern was people who had their permitting issued and potentially maybe the setback standard, the law cover standard at the time. Permits were issued, but with the benefit of hindsight, maybe, you know, they would discover that it should not happen. And so it's not a legal, well, it was permitted, but in the instance of casualty, then they would, even though what they got was permitted at the time, they wouldn't be able to rebuild. And there was, it's a similar issue, not exactly the same one as Matt was saying. But that was the testimony from a citizen. But, you know, this is a long process. Those were just work sessions really geared toward trying to give staff feedback as to what we could get closest to the mark. And, you know, and the process here is for a planning commission to make its own decision. So don't feel beholden to necessarily. Yeah, well, you're charged with making your own recommendation.
Sure.
That's what this commission is for. Just like the council will make their final decision based upon all the evidence and their own decision. Just want to clarify those processes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, some were down on hill for us. Just with everything that we're talking about, how all the municipalities in the state are starting to become more and more a uniform standard.
True.
And then this is like an outlier from what I've seen, I'm sure other municipalities, but what I see in my, my work, so I have to deal with it every day. So I was just wondering what the, it doesn't matter.
Came from, yeah. Yeah, you bet.
Any other comments on non-conforming usage? All right, next, we will proceed.
I make a motion, planning commission.
Oh, not yet, not yet.
I thought you said that.
Why don't you do the public testimony part first?
Sorry.
You're almost there. You're almost there. I appreciate the enthusiasm.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to the public testimony section of our meeting. Okay, so if you wish to testify during this hearing, please state your address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. If you have any written material or other evidence you would like us to see, please provide it to staff who will distribute to the council and to the commission and the applicant, as well as place it in the record. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and now ask for testimony for those in favor of the proposed changes.
Chair, there is nobody online.
Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to make a testimony? All right, we will now hear from those opposed to the proposed changes. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Lastly, we will now hear from anyone else who wishes to speak. Again, I'll turn that over to the audience. And I think we're good. Okay.
So now you close the public hearing. You can do that with a gavel pound if you want.
There we go. All right. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of our meeting. Okay, questions of staff is next on our meeting agenda here. Does the staff have any further comments or clarification? Does any commissioner have any clarifying questions for staff regarding these proposed changes?
Yeah, this is really the point for deliberation where you folks talk amongst yourselves about any of these issues. If you don't feel like you need to, you can jump right to the recommendations. Your call.
I think we beat most of this into the.
This is very familiar.
Yeah, I don't really have anything myself. Here are no other questions or comments from commissioners, staff. Do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Let's go on then to deliberations. And this is the point where we discuss the product, project amongst commission. Okay, motion to, okay, we're to our. Okay, motion to approve. Okay, we're to our motion. Does anyone have a, want to entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. I'm motion that the planning commission recommend approval of application number DC 25-01 to the city council. One second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
Conclusion. Thank you to all who have testified tonight. Thank you. Okay, next, back to my agenda here, guys. Planning update, planning update, Mr. Matt.
I don't think we've had any applications that were approved that we would want to tell everybody about. Yeah, we've got, we've had no ministerial permits that were approved since last time we met, so I don't have an update for you right now. We've got, I guess I have a small one. We've got an economic opportunities analysis that we had done that takes a look at the projection of what the city is going to need for the next 20 years. And we're planning on bringing that back to you next month for all of you folks to vote on. So that one, you got some homework to do because you get to read through, you know, 65 page document and then meet and we can chat about it. And again, same as this one, you make a recommendation to the city council because that's going to be technically, it's an amendment to our comprehensive plan. And so it's going to come as a comprehensive plan amendment, even though it's really just tacking a technical study on the end. It's not proposing to change any words in our comp plan, but that's just the vehicle we use to do it. And so that'll come at you next month. That's exciting.
Is that the reason for Wednesday meeting or special time?
Yes, yes, because, yeah, the Tuesday was the national night out. And so we couldn't meet on that because apparently that's more important than my planning commission. Not my opinion, by the way. I think the planning commission is by far Trump's national night out, but you know, that's my opinion. So we moved it to Wednesday instead. You can eat hot dogs on Tuesday and then come in here on Wednesday.
Okay, we are up there at the end. Anything else for the good of the order from anyone in the room? Okay, our meeting is now adjourned at 6:34 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Half an hour.